Good evening. This is the November 18th, 2025 Open Public Meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. For trustees, KK Hill.
Here.
Airhart Graef.
Here.
J.F. Alcock.
Yeah.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Megan Small.
Here.
Joshua Small.
Here.
And me, Rob Pettit. For library staff, we have library director Robert McLean.
Here.
Is Jenna here?
No.
Okay. Program specialist Gayle and Dennett.
Here.
And recording secretary Faith Priscill.
Here.
And for the Library Foundation of Needham, we have Kathy DeDessio.
Yeah.
This meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM on December 9th, 2025. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:02 PM. For public comments, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of 10 minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. While the board will take public comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. For minutes, request a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2025 meeting, then we can discuss.
So.
Second.
All right, since we're all here in person, we can start by discussion. Open that up. All right, no discussion in the minutes. All right, and we've gotten a revised version of those, so thanks, Rob. And thank you, Josh. Hearing no discussion. I'll go ahead and take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. So that brings us to our, the next item on our agenda, which is an update on the LFN from Kathy.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to visit you this evening. I want to thank Rob for giving me a ride here. And I also want to thank Airhart because I was reading the last minutes, and he did a beautiful job with his review of what was happening with the LFN last month. So thank you for doing such a great job, Airhart. I'll be brief, just a few things that I just want to just review the the annual appeal. The annual appeal for the Library Foundation went out in October 23rd. And we made, we did mail to precincts G and H, and we also mailed to our repeat donors for the last five years. It's usually those repeat donors that we get the majority of our donations. We are also going to do something different. We're going to increase to doing two more precincts this year, I and J. And we'll probably be doing those and maybe the end of March, early April. And we're going to be zeroing on two things, making it, using our social media as much as we can, and also sending out reminders. It seems like we send out these letters, but we don't send out reminders to say, have you forgotten to donate to the Library Foundation? And we're going to try to hit some of the new residents to Needham. There are a lot of new houses, a lot of new people coming to Needham, so we're going to specially send out letters to those people, hoping that we can tell them more about the library, the Library Foundation, and hope that they will donate to our annual appeal. I know I spoke to Rob about this many times, but we continue to hope, I'm going to read, so I won't take up too much time. I tend to wonder. We continue to hope that a meeting can be arranged with Katie, that's the town manager, Rob, the town council, Chris, and myself, to create documents to ensure the future naming rights to the library continue to belong to the LFN. We have naming rights now, but no legal documentation or documentations were created to specifically say that. So we need to get that taken care of for what I'll talk about in a few minutes. The sale of naming opportunities in the past has been most successful fundraisers for the LFN. With the assumed to be new team rooms and the other major renovations slated for the library in coming years, the opportunity for future revenue to the library through naming rights could be quite lucrative. So hopefully, we can plan that meeting, Rob. The, during my first year of president and into our second year, one of the things that I wanted to do is really get into the weeds and the roots of our documentation, to see what needed to be updated, to see what was going on with our technology, to understand how we could make improvements. So the LFN continues to work on upgrading and working with our technology infrastructure, especially our NEON, our website, and our Gmail archive accounts. Our archive accounts need to be totally reorganized. Things go up there, and they're sort of helter-skelter right now, so we are going to be working on that. Our NEON, which is our nonprofit computer program, probably about 20% of that we actually use, because we really don't know how to use the other 80%. It's a phenomenal tool for fundraising organization. You just don't have the manpower or the people on the board who have that skill, and we're hoping to do some significant recruiting in that area. I also have this vision, and I've spoken to Rob about that, to create a cocktail party at the library for the new teen center, inviting local businesses, business owners, press, presidents of banks, LFN high-level donors, town officials, to introduce them to the teen room, and also the naming opportunities that hopefully that the library will be able to, the Library Foundation will be able to send. It would be a phenomenal opportunity for us, so hopefully, we can work on that. It does require a lot of people to support this, and I'm trying to rev up some energy with the board, but I think it would be, I think it would be really wonderful. But I do know, being past co-chair of the Black, White, and Red All-Over's that we did several years ago for fundraisers, working within the library structure is not an easy thing. There's a lot of logistics that go along with that, because you're open from nine to nine almost every single day. So it's hard for us to be able to do it, but it's not impossible. Hopefully, hopefully, we can do something like that. In the past year, I said we were looking at the weeds and the roots of what's going on with the library. So over the past year, the LFN has been working with our attorney to review our IRS support organization status and classifications. We are now a 501(c)(3) charitable organization and classified as a 509(a)(3) support organization. We received our classifications by IRS determination letter that was sent to us in 2004. In 2004, there were no specific types of 509(a)(3) classifications, but there, there are now. But that happened 10 years ago, so we are a little behind in getting up to speed on our type. So again, we approached our lawyer, our attorney, and said, what are these types? What do we have to do? So we learned about the three types. That's basically why I'm here, because it's really how we interface with our, our library and how our foundation interfaces with you. So we looked at type one after discussions with our attorney, and we brought that information to the board, and also the letter that she wrote to us explaining them in detail. And we had a discussion, and it was decided type one wasn't something that we wanted to do. Type one really would change the whole, I think, makeup and format of the foundation, and we really didn't want to go there. And we didn't think, you know, somebody like a historian like myself, that I don't think that's what the founding members really wanted us to do, to make such a significant change with the foundation. Type two, the lawyer said, don't go there, so we did not. But type three was almost what we're doing now. And we were so excited because we could manage that, and there would be minimal changes to the to what we are doing now and how we interface with the library. The most important thing is, one of the requirements of a type three is a member of the LFN directors be appointed by the library. And in this case, I'm assuming it's the Board of Trustees. We have that. And we've had it every single year since we were incorporated in 2004. In fact, one year we had four trustees, because they were the founding members of the foundation, and so we always worked, I think respectfully, with the Board of Trustees of the library. Another requirement is that member, that trustee appointee has all the rights of voting, all the rights to have information about our decision-making, our how, how money comes in to the Library Foundation, how money goes out to the Library Foundation, all our financial data, all our financial policies, because all of our Board of Trustees, all of our board has that information. And everything we do is, is voted on, how money goes into our endowment, how many go, how money goes out of our endowment, and how we give money to the library. And that's the biggest thing. And I'm very happy about years ago that we came up with the grant process, because that's exactly, that's absolutely exactly what will be helping us to provide the information to the IRS and also to you, the library and the trustees, is what goes, what do we give the library every year? How do people get money from us to the library? That's all in our grant process. No money goes to the library without going through the grant process. No, no one can write a grant without going through the director. And that director signs that grant, and then it comes to us for approval. Tomorrow, we will be looking at four grants as a board, but the committee, we have a grant committee, has looked at those grants prior to, so that we can present them to the board tomorrow. So Rob will know probably on Friday if all of them have passed or not.
Not Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, if you want. Thursday morning, I'll, I'll send you off an email, or Deborah will send you off an email. So we're in very good, a very good place. There are other documentations that we need to provide to you. We need to provide you our 990. We need to provide to you, and we're happy to do so. Our bylaws, if you don't already have them, and any updates to any documentation that we do, and we are doing. There will be some significant changes in the bylaw because of this type three. So now we are classified as soon as all the documentation gets to the IRS. We are a 509(a)(3) type three support organization to, to the library. The, probably the last thing I'll talk about is that one of the things about nonprofits is they have great issue with sustainability. The Library Foundation has gone up and down over the years. I've been on the board since 2008 to 2007. And there are times when our board is lively and active, and it's not difficult to recruit new people. And we also have times when it's very difficult to recruit and to recruit people who are active. We are a fundraising organization, and we need to fundraise in order to keep up our endowment, but also to let the, our, our classification is the money that comes in through our endowment. We also need to provide money that comes in through our fundraising as well. We need to show a percentage of our money that comes in through fundraising. So it's important, sustainability. But the other one is succession. And all organizations, and I'm on four of them in the town of Needham, succession is so difficult, and it has been difficult for the Library Foundation. Where do we get our next president? Where do we get our next trustee? Where do we get our new leadership team? And how are they trained and mentored, so when they transition, it's easy? So those are the kinds of things, because my transition was a little more difficult, because people left the board before I had a chance to work with them. And it made it, it made it difficult for me, even though I had been on the board for so many years. So those are the kinds of goals that we'll be looking to for the next couple of years, to make sure that we can we can keep ourselves going. The word, that's the word. Thank you. I said it three times, and I couldn't say it before. Thank you. And succession, to be look for leadership as well. So we have a very active nominating team, and hopefully, we can recruit some new people. So that's all from, for me right now. So thank you for giving me the time. I greatly appreciate it.
Oh, sure, Jay.
Thank you, Kathy. It's nice to see you.
Oh, how are you, Jay?
And I see you've been busy, and we thank you for your efforts.
Thanks, Jay.
So I'm listening to all this. I had just a couple of questions. With the naming opportunities, which I think we all agree there are opportunities coming up with this new teen center and then with other stuff. Is there a strategy for figuring out, you know, how much to charge? Do you use an outside agent or representative who specializes in that sort, in that sort of work? I, I don't, I don't know exactly how that works, but I think that there are agencies and companies that specialize in naming rights to figure out how to best take advantage of the opportunity. I don't know what.
I think there are. We spoke to a couple of people. It's, it's more complicated than it probably was 20 years ago. To, I guess, naming opportunities, basically, we're handshake. Okay, you get the naming opportunities. Here's a handshake. We'll put it in the minutes of the trustee meeting, and you're all set to go. But now it's, it's a little different, and there has to be some legal background to it, and there are people who specifically.
Charge.
And also to look at it, absolutely. I think we have to find someone to help us through that. So it was, it's an excellent question.
Can I ask a broader question about naming opportunities?
I haven't, while we're on the subject. Yeah, exactly. Okay. You talked about an understanding between the town and the LFN, you know, that you'd have to put that in writing. I'm just trying to understand. Is there an agreement in principle on all the terms, or is that stuff that still needs to be worked out?
In relationship to naming?
Yes.
That has to be determined now through the meeting that we will have with the town manager and the town attorney, so that we can put the documents very specific.
Well, but the trick is to reach the agreement before you worry about the documents. You've got to figure out what, what the arrangements are. So if any of us could be helpful with that, just, you know.
Thank you. I mean, I don't know if, if, again, I don't know if, if the attorney will be coming to the meeting with a set of documents for us to look at. And I have, I really don't know, because we haven't, I don't know if they've discussed anything with you, Rob, or not. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, the intent is we will, the town will draft a, an agreement for, and then we'll meet with Kathy and the LFN to
Okay.
go over it. There was an initial draft that town council put together, but really missed the mark about what we were talking about, so instead of wasting Kathy's time, they've gone back to the drawing.
Okay, well, good luck with all that. You know, we've got to figure out what, you know, what the terms are before you can.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Josh, did you have a?
Yeah, so let's start with, I guess, more general question about naming rights in general. I'm presuming you're saying, in, in terms of naming rights, like what any other organization does when they're building a new project or something like that. Theoretically, someone could slap their name on the teen room. This would be the John Smith Needham Library Teen Room or something. Is that like the general overall idea, or is like it more a?
And that would be expensive.
It would be expensive.
Well, it would be very expensive.
My point being, is that the general idea? I mean, there's a plaque on the wall behind that I can see over Rob's head from here that says that this was a gift of, I think it's Friends of the Needham Public Library over there. I'm assuming that's for the community room, and the community room is not, is that, is that the intent?
Actually, for the electronics.
Oh, okay, for that.
So they like, I was going to say, that's still up for grabs. This community room is still up for grabs for a naming opportunity, but.
Right, but I, I mean, I guess, I guess, you know, I don't even, I don't know that the general public even knows that that is something that even exists as an option for their charitable giving. And I wonder if, going forward, if we're going, if this is a plan to, you know, increase the endowment of the LFN, which I think is an excellent idea, if that needs to then be marketed much more, because, you know, I give the LFN, I got two things, because I was precinct P H also, so. But the point being is, I don't know that, like.
They mentioned in those mailings.
Right, right. Is that even, like, I didn't know that I could name a bookshelf or something like that.
Well, we'll be more, we're not looking for, for that, but.
I would name a bookshelf.
I want to name a senior room.
Yes, I just wanted to know with the naming rights, would the naming rights be a one-time thing? Or is there like a 10-year period where we could invite another suitor to take that on?
That's the negotiations.
That, that's, that's.
How much money?
Because I wouldn't want to, in all fairness to the LFN, I wouldn't want them to have one person be able to have that whole thing and never be able to expand, but given like the uniqueness of calling it something. Just, I was just wondering if that was something that, as, as Jay was saying, in the negotiations, I think that.
And that's what the outside advisors would know, what would, what would be customary and appropriate.
Right, because I would, I would hope that it would be something, if, if they had a seven or eight-year kind of, or five-year, you could have a new player, because there could be a new bank wanting to give the LFN $2 million to name it. And I think that would be like, I would hate to be locked into Bobo's Teen Center, and then we only got $100,000 versus $2 million.
I think, first of all, I think that is on the table for negotiation right now.
Yes.
I think your questions are outstanding. We're a little bit ahead, because we have not really sat down to the table and really talked through this to make sure that we're doing things properly.
Right.
And that, to me, and I read a lot of research on, on fundraising for libraries and schools and so forth, we don't want people to buy chairs. We don't want people to name this. We're talking about specific areas of the, of the library, just like we did in the past.
Right.
So you could go to one of the studied carols, and that's named for Roach Brothers, or whatever it is they donated. So we're looking for very specific things and be very creative and respectful to our library on how we label that. So it's all same. It's, it fits within the character of our library.
Right.
So there are a lot of things that have to be sorted out.
In the.
A lot, absolutely, but it's a phenomenal opportunity for the foundation. And if we choose, or however we decide, to have a limited time of naming,
Right.
something that maybe was $10,000 for 10 years, we could go back and rename that and get additional funds for that same rotation. So there are lots of wonderful opportunities that, that are still on the table. So your questions are excellent.
And I would hope that in the negotiations, where they, that old-school handshake, that there's something documented to say that the LFN has that, is that is in place. That's probably one of the first things to make sure that you, you have that element locked in, and then you can kind of branch out from there as to what Jay and Josh were talking about.
Absolutely.
And, I'm sorry, Katie, do you have a question?
Yes, I just, on the same topic, just, my understanding is that the names, the naming opportunities that have happened in the past, what, when do they expire?
They, they were in perpetuity.
They're in perpetuity, so which is, okay, so that's.
I have my feelings about, I have my feelings about that.
Going forward, is that correct?
I have my feelings about how I would approach that.
Yes.
But it, it will be probably up for discussion, but I do have my feelings about going back to people who were told in perpetuity that it would be changed, so.
Either that or asking them for a little bit more money in order to keep it up.
Well, we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll see how the negotiations go and how, again, I'll be looking out for the best interest of the foundation and then for the library as well.
And my follow-up is regarding the, the legal status of the Library Foundation. What are their restrictions on what the money that you folks wonderfully raise and how much we appreciate that? Are there limitations on, does it have to go to the Needham Free Public Library, or are there, is it more broad than that?
I believe we are a support agency to the library.
The library only, so you couldn't choose another charity to start.
No, no, no.
Just, thank you.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the LFN was created by the trustees of the library originally.
Correct.
So probably in the mission document somewhere.
Because I think that's what people understand. When they give to the LFN, they understand that they're giving to the library.
Did anyone else have any questions or thoughts on, on the elephant update?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Kathy. We really appreciate it and all the efforts of the LFN and all the support.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to the next agenda item, we've got the director's report. I'll turn it over to Rob for that.
Thanks, Rob. Just want to start with some department highlights from October. Children's Department, again, just had a fantastic, fun month of just wowing the families of Needham with great programming, including some good Halloween stuff, not-so-spoooky storytimes, Halloween storytimes, a mystery room, puppet show. In October, the Cinema Kids program series began, and that is a program supported by the LFN. It's a program for older kids to create a video, animated video. And there's a quote here from one of the patrons. He, "My instructor is amazing with the kids, and my child's been looking forward to going every week and loves to show up what they've created in class." So that's, for us, a big success. And, you know, why do we have these quotes? Because the elephant makes us collect them, which is great that they do, because they want to know how many people showed up and the impact it has on our patrons. So we provide them that detail, which helps provide transparency and recognition of the work that they do and the money they provide us, but also, I believe, helps them when they're reaching out to donors to show the impact that their dollars are making here at the library. So, so moving on to technical services, the Large Print Collection relocation project is complete. What's actually happening now in middle of November, we're moving the adult fiction collection, so we're up to the ages. So that's pretty exciting. We hope the next couple of weeks to be done with that, and when we're done with that, we may have one extra row of shelving that we can use to give more reading room to Large Print. So we will eventually be done. We're not just endlessly going to be moving books on the first floor.
It does feel like it's never ending. Keep moving, go live.
Yeah, but we've already had some good feedback from patrons who use Large Print Collection, liking that it's upfront and more easily accessible. The adult fiction collection is going to be much more browsable and more of a bookstore feel. We won't be using the top shelf, the bottom shelf. We're going to have display space on every bay of shelving, so that'll be exciting to see the impact.
I've seen a ton of that already.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll be keeping that up and hoping to see more engagement with that collection. The Needham Memory Cafe launch is here under the Technical Services Department, because Tamara Dalton, who heads up the department, has been working with Karen Donahue from the Circulation Department and community partners, mainly the Needham Community Council, the Youth and Family Services. People escaping my memory right now. For a memory cafe held monthly. People escaping my memory right now, um, for a memory cafe held monthly here at the library for, um, people who have dementia and their caregivers. So it started, um, in September, um, and again in October, um, and it's been a great, uh, success. So that's why that's here. Um, also, I believe it's under the, uh, Circulation Department. Moving on to Technology Archives Department, this, as you all know, is the, um, Department of One, who does so much, uh, every, every month for us. And so some of the work that Danielle has done here is, um, listed, um, as well. Um, she's went to a three-day internet librarian conference, um, in October, uh, which is virtual. She really enjoyed it and got a lot out of it. I like in-person conferences myself, um, and she completed a project management class. One of our action, uh, priority action items, FY26, is the last bullet here. Um, she created a scope and sent out, the scope to consultants who are, uh, work in archives. Uh, she was working with staff from the NBLC to, uh, to do that. Uh, we received, uh, three proposals and selected one, um, in early November. So we checked the references, which were stellar, and are engaging with her to, uh, begin her work at the end of December, early January, to be completed at the end of March on time. And that, again, is sort of a roadmap for our archives, sort of, um, an assessment of where we are, what we have and what our priorities should be moving forward, uh, for next steps for, uh, for that work. And that's $5,000 that was, uh, trustees put aside at a library state aid this year for that. So, uh, really excited to move on that, uh, priority item.
This is a study of our archives and perhaps what we should be doing about managing this?
Yes, and conservation, preservation, sort of digitization, but where we are now, what the priority items are for us to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, just, um, add to that, just that, um, I hope since I found, I don't think there's a general public, uh, idea of what, what is in there and what, you know, why we have the archives. So, you know, some ultimately down the line, you guys, uh, know some kind of public-facing, um, communication document or something that.
Yeah.
What it is.
Yes, it's, I was just meeting with, um, Danielle today and one of the other priority action items is for her to, uh, work on the local history collection, which is not the archives, but is the non-circulating local history collection. So she'll be working on reading it and assessing it and, uh, purchasing more materials for that collection. But, uh, one idea she had was, uh, to create, uh, book lists or QR codes to put in the non-fiction collection to let people know what's in the local history collection if that aligns with, uh, their, their interests. But, yeah, all of this work is about greater access, uh, and, um, and just being a good steward of these unique items we have. They may not all be valuable, but they're one of a kind and they're needed, so we. Reference Department, just to, um, shout out about Libby. So in the month of October, we have 11,000 checkouts in Libby, which is, um, our main ebook and the audiobook, um, service for patrons, um, is the ninth highest in Minuteman Library Network, and ahead of some of our neighboring libraries, which we always like to point out, right? So that is the first time, uh, we had reached that, uh, ninth place. So we hope to maintain that for the rest of the fiscal year. We are supporting the Friends, um, Sunday Salon Lecture Series with displays, uh, supporting, uh, marketing, promoting the, uh, attendance of the program, but also connecting our collections to the content of lecture. So there's one out there now for the Harlem Renaissance Lecture in December. So it's, um, been well-received. The patrons and the friends are, uh, very happy that we're doing that to help market the programs. Erin and Galen had fun representing the library. I can say you had fun, right?
Yes, we did, actually.
Human Resources Department, um, is really good at making sure, uh, we all stay sane. So they had a take a break event, uh, where, um, people were invited to disconnect from their screens and their devices and just reconnect with, um, de-stressing in old-fashioned ways. And so, um, Galen and Erin brought some material, physical materials as well as, um, knitting and other, uh, resources to.
And we also sort of raided the Friends books and we had a few of those go home with other people. And others we actually left at the, uh, art and rec so that they have reading material for those people who are waiting to talk to other people there. So see how that works. They got a little, start on a little library.
So we did this last fall and it's just a, a nice, easy way to, um, add some more value to the work of the HR department and, uh, also let town employees know we're here. Get your library card and, uh, visit us. So, uh, thanks to them for, for doing that. Circulation is continuing to work on this big project of cleaning up, um, notes, unnecessary notes on more than 5,000, uh, patron records. So they've almost reached 2,000 and, uh, so we're looking forward to, um, getting that done in 2026. Just FYI, um, a few times a year, the Masses Library System does a survey. Uh, we have to count everything we put into the great crates that they come and pick up every day. Um, you know, librarians like to count and we love numbers, so it's, it's, we probably secretly love it, even though it's like, ah, the survey again. So, but it gives us great numbers like, um, here. Um, so at the end of October, um, almost 23 items, 2,300 items were packed from this library into 77 crates that went out into the world. So these are items that aren't, you know, just from our collection, but they could have been returned here and just going back to the owning library. But there's, um, significant, um, daily activity of receiving and taking away of crates, uh, not just here, but every library across the state. It's just amazing system, um, complicated, complex system that happens, um, and a good price.
So multiply that number by four and that's how much we send out, which, well, and we're getting just as much back.
Yeah, this is just what's going out, so.
A week.
Yeah.
It's a lot of materials.
There's easily 20 to 30 crates sometimes waiting to be picked up. We may get just as many coming back in.
Yeah.
And they get processed every day.
Yeah, Monday morning, it's usually like 27 crates are sitting there waiting for pickup.
And they're, man, have their own fleet of vans that go around.
It's not Minuteman. It's, the Mass Library System has a contract with Optima Delivery Service. So Optima does all this for us and they have warehouses across the state in different regions. So luckily, our guy is great, is fantastic.
Then I assume our staff then have to put the books where they want. I mean, there's, there's delivery involved.
Oh, yeah. Uh, they're gonna take, all those crates go down to circulation and starting in the afternoon into the evening, they'll be checking in all the stuff from those crates, uh, sending, uh, the ones that need to go to the hold shelf. Others will be going back out onto the shelves for the pages to deal with.
So that's why I got the email like two o'clock this afternoon.
That's correct.
From Medford.
And then, um, again, here, um, with the Large Print Collection, it's really been a joint effort between Circulation and Technical Services to, um, to do all that work. So, um, we've been working, um, in ways past year or so to break down the siloing that has been here between departments, you know, whether it's cross-training or, um, creating, um, teams for our priority items for the action items, um, across departments, just to, um, re-engage our staff in working with and supporting each other across departments. And it's, uh, it's really fun to see. You like it?
I've been training everything over the years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I can do anything in this building if necessary.
Yes.
This is true.
Yep, including lockup.
Oh, yeah.
Um, moving on to personnel, um, so a part-time children's reference librarian position is going to be reposted this week. Um, we had candidates that we interviewed, but, um, uh, I think, um, perhaps there's another candidate out there waiting for us. So we'll be reposting that. On the other hand, yesterday, Andy started in his full-time position as Technical Services Assistant. Uh, he was a part-time Technical Service Assistant in the department. Um, amazingly.
What is your question?
Yes.
Isn't possible to generate some sort of list of the staff with photos so that we could, now we know, I know them by names and you say, I know them by face and you say the names, but I'm not sure I'm always connecting it. If there was some, some way for us to, to have names with faces, it would be.
Cause there's a lot of new people.
It would be useful.
Okay, I'll, I'll think about it.
We did do that once and we want, I can certainly do it again.
Also can always, um, bring around a new juice to everybody.
Yeah, then I have to remember that, you know. No, I, I'm happy to do that, you know, but I just think it's just great.
So with this position that Andy's filled, we had 85 applications, uh, which is amazing, uh, number, so.
Jump market's not great, right? We're seeing a lot of that.
On Friday, we had final round interviews for the Circulation Supervisor position and, um, hope to make an announcement, um, at the end of this week. I'm filling that position. And, um, a bunch of us went to Mila in Newport, um, at the end of October. So Jenna, Diana, Tamara, Wendy, Erin and myself went, um, four of us received scholarships from the Mass Library System. And at, at Mila, um, Sarah Sagigi and the Executive Director was there and let us know that at their board meeting the previous Monday, they'd given a report about scholarships given out in the past year and the heat map shows that Needham is on fire because, um, our staff have received the most scholarships of any library in the Commonwealth. So, um, we're happy about.
Thank you.
And they were just, um, happy to see so many of our staff wanting to be, um, taking advantage of these opportunities and, um, of professional development. So that was nice. Um, and then some meetings in October, I went to this here. Um, talking on phase one, what's happening above us now, um, it is on time and on budget as of when I wrote this yesterday, Monday, November 17th. So, um, I can say as of Tuesday, November 18th, it's on time and on budget. I'd say that jokingly, it's, it's not as if, um, you know, and there's any danger of either of those things going off the rails. It's going well.
You, um, perhaps at our next meeting, we might, uh, put something on the agenda where we actually take a look and, you know, at the status.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, let me talk to Ken about that. Yeah, cause they do lockup. But maybe he can, you have the coffee and.
Coffee, yeah, which was interesting.
Yeah.
So I can see why.
So our next one is next Tuesday. I'll let everybody know about that one. But, um, yeah, I'll talk to Ken about. That might be interesting, even, um, Katie and Liz are coming to the December meeting. So maybe even starting there briefly, if Ken was able to, um, come and let us in.
Maybe if she comes tomorrow morning, maybe if she comes tomorrow morning for the construction storytime, they can walk her up there.
Yeah, yeah, you can borrow the hats from the kids.
They getting the hats for the kids?
Um, I have to check with Paula. She's always got tricks up her sleeve. But so Ken Sergeant, the, our OPM is starting off the construction storytime tomorrow. So that'll be a monthly series through February. Um, we're excited about that. Alex, who was the project superintendent, um, has left the project and so Mark has replaced him. So we're happy to welcome him. Um, if you've been worrying about all that surplus furniture we were selling, it's all gone. It was sold, um, a little bit of it was not sold and that's, uh, brought over to RTS, so, um, we're done with that. Erin is, um, holding opposite programming for teens and using the money that the trustees, um, put aside for that. Um, so that's great. And then I included some images of, um, a couple of the graphics that were chosen for the new teen room. So the first one, um, Arcs and Stripes is, um, in the craft snack area, which is, um, where the sticker of the farm was in Pennsylvania. So the coloring, um, not so much in this photo that I sh- showed with you in the first photo, but the second.
This is actually what it's gonna look like, that?
Yes, yeah.
Great.
It's sort of, um, works with the colors, uh, across the room. And then there's a vinyl graphic on the glass, um, on the, of circles which are, uh, from the mural. To have that connection. Uh, we also, we put them, as you can see, at the bottom, so we, it doesn't interfere with any of our sightlines, but. Also, you know, it says it's a teen room and on the doors into the teen room, it lists the name, it says teen room and also what the four areas within it, um.
It may be the Roach Brothers Teen Room at some point.
Yep. So that's what phase one, it's, um, going well. Um, Rob and I are attending the PPBC meetings as required. I think there were two in the past few weeks. Ken gives an update and we pay some bills and, um, they seem happy.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty quiet, which is all you can hope for, so.
Yes, they got bigger things on their mind.
Just a few.
It's been nice the past two minutes. They put us earlier on the agenda.
Members of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, those 10 o'clock meetings after that long discussion is a little too much.
Yeah.
When they met here, they used to go to, yeah, which was beyond our custodial time, quite a few times.
On the financial reports, it included the FY26 financial report, which, um, there's nothing really to note there. We're just sort of on track with our spending for, um, FY26. But I also wanted to include you, include in the packet, our FY27 budget requests, and I can go over that briefly if you say. It's a, um, two-page document and my request this year is a little over $2.5 million, which, um, the base changed and, you know, for, that is the increase over what you're doing this year, um, without anything extra. So our base change increases a three, 1.3% increase, which is really nice to see. When we add in our DSR4 requests, um, it gets a little higher at, uh, 3%, still, um, nice. So we had three requests for new spending to incorporate into our operating budget. Um, again, the, uh, $4,800 for the annual maintenance of our website. $1,300 for Lib staffer, which is our online portal for scheduling all library employees. And then again, we put forward the, a new part-time teen librarian position. So those are our three requests for additional funding, um, this year. Um, so, um, if those were to be approved, our budget would just increase of 3% over FY26. At the end of.
So that 3% on here includes those three parts.
Right, the 1.3 is without them. Um, on November 4th, we had our meeting with, um, Dave Davis and Katie and Liz, new depart, Deputy Town Manager, along with Cecilia. The um, second in charge of finance, just to go over our requests. Member, um, Joe Gruzy, a member of the finance committee was there, was in attendance to, um, just to be briefed, um, so we went over, um, what we requested, the increases, the decreases, the DSR fours and also the capital improvement plan. But, but that was, so, yeah, it's just an, a meeting to talk about what we suggest, what we submitted, it was, um, no decisions were made, um, that'll occur in the next couple of months by the town manager, but then also the finance committee this winter will do their thing. And then they, you know, may town, may, may, town meeting will be the final operator about what's actually gonna happen. With FY twenty-seven budget.
At the very least, did they say that our DSR fours were all in good order?
Yes, there were no questions about whether they should be DSR fours or not. But um, no comment on, um, if they liked it. But um. So. Move on if there's no specific questions on, on that. To the state aid, library state aid report. So um, you can see we've caught up to some of the expenditures. Just about ninety-five hundred dollars, um, since our last meeting. Uh, we're still on track um, to not exceed our spending that was approved, um, and encumbered. Received an email yesterday that um, the MBLC has started to certify public libraries for this year's uh, library state aid awards. And um, we weren't in the initial batch, it's not an issue, they've got a lot to do, probably be in the December meeting. But looking at the figures of initial awards for libraries, um, we'll probably receive last year, I think we were at seventy-nine thousand dollars, our library state aid will probably be around eighty-two thousand, so more money this year, which is, is nice.
It's great to see.
Yeah.
That's almost double from when I entered the board six years ago.
Yeah, y- yeah. It's, it's amazing, they, um, state legislature the past number of years has really stepped up, um, to support us with library state aid, I think we're all at historic numbers now. One thing we'll be interested to look at is um, library state aid is calculated by three things, one of them is non-resident circulation. That is non-residents who walk into the building and check something out at the circulation desk. We had about twenty cents for each one of those checkouts. If you look at our library state aid award compared to Wellesley, you know, similar sized communities, their non-resident circulation award is um, like double ours, because so many, uh, non-residents go there, whether it's, you know, convenient or geography or what have you, or.
Things are fancy here.
Students.
But down.
Students.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so we've seen an increase in our non-resident circulation, so we'll see, we're interested to see how that translates into more dollars. Sure that. Moving on from there, sorry, keep that mic back to you guys, sorry about that. Um, library trust funds, so we had a lot of activity um, this year as um, bills came in. The collection spending we've been doing as we prepared um, contracts to use our operating monies for collections, so you see um, those dispersments uh, listed here, but also um, specifically called out in the director's report. Let's see the, the whole list of those amounts. This amount includes, um, bunch of invoices, Rob just signed, which will go to the commissioners of trust funds next Tuesday night for their meeting, for them to approve. So we're happy about that and their support. Moving on to other reports, we have the, uh, well, before that, we have our um, DIB staff efforts listed here. Thanks to Jay, um, connecting us with one of his neighbors, we were able to pull together um, rather quickly for a library. A just, a program on dyslexia for Dyslexia Awareness Month in October, as long with the, a, um, display. So thanks for that, that was um, useful for us to.
Thank you, the library was so responsive to my neighbor's question and put together, you know, a great program. You know, uh, very much appreciated, I know.
And um, on the children's department here, we've added a new Spanish story time. Um, so we're excited about that joining our Chinese story time and sensory story times. DIB, DIB occurrences are listed here for um, things we added to the collection in October. And then the new and withdrawn summary report, which um, is, I'm gonna take a breather after this month. This shows um, the last um, set of intense weeding we had to do for the adult picture collection before we uh, moved it all for the last time. So you see that reflected here in these large numbers of withdrawn in October. But the new for September and October, pretty consistent. So the, in October, uh, Luann retired in the middle of the month, so um, you know, they're still getting the work done and it's always our top priority to get the new materials processed and catalogued and onto the shelves into the hands of readers as quickly as possible, not just other things we, we. So they're a great team upstairs and now Andy's a full-time member of that team. And.
Right, well, thank you, Rob. Moving to the next agenda item, your new business, we have an action item, which is to vote to accept a list of gifts. Uh, that list was included in the trustee packet. Um, before we discuss, do we have a motion to approve? Is that second? Right, any discussion on the list?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have, is there any particular um, use for, that has been designated for that information?
I think, doesn't anything under, I think we discussed this a few months ago, anything under like twelve hundred bucks automatically goes to the what, virtually a permanent fund.
Yeah, I think it, I think five hundred or less.
But I knew some number that.
So this is.
Auto goes to.
Yeah. Right, well, uh, any further discussion? Here are none, I'll move to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, the gift list is approved unanimously. And that brings us to our next topic, which is uh, some draft statistical reports, both monthly and quarterly as well as annual, um, I'll turn it over to Rob to discuss those.
Thank you, Rob, um, so maybe let's start just at the end quickly, um, our hard head asked us to check the um, FY twenty-five um, stats that we included, that the trustees included at the end of their letter for their um, FY twenty, strategic claim review that went out, and so uh, we checked that and um, the numbers are good there. So, um, so I included that here, it's not different, it's not a, a new draft, but um, as we continue this discussion about data and how you wanna see it, um, we can work on what a annual report of data looks like for you, but um, this tonight is not like a new draft or anything to consider, but um, the monthly and quarterly are um, drafts that we just wanna um, talk to the trustees about. So the monthly statistics report that um, the trustees have received prior. I don't know, it seemed not very engaging, so this is just our attempt to make it a little bit more arresting for you and that maybe it's something that, you know, something sticks out to you, like you can just easily send it along to uh, neighbors or friends and say, look, look at the great things happening here. Um, so um, this is the first draft of some of what we believe are the most important data points from the um, original monthly statistics report. It's open for discussion, one thing I, I do wanna um, let you know that we do intend on the new monthly report to compare the monthly data to the monthly data from the year prior. Okay, we just aren't in a place right now to trust last, uh, the data from October two thousand twenty-four.
We're doing apples to apples.
Right, so a year from now, when whatever the new monthly report is, it will have that information as well, so that, you know, it's, you can trust it and you can say it's a five percent increase in circulation.
Is, is that, is this just for the trustees or is this to be distributed generally in the community or something?
Whatever we end up with, if it's um.
Like one page like this could go in like the.
Yeah.
Library notes that go out monthly.
I would love to put something like this in the library.
Right, yeah. So it's something we could, we could push out, um, and share wider.
Yep.
Um, so this is just an initial thought using Canva, um, of something that a monthly report could look like. So we picked out, um, you know, circulation and broke it down to, you know, physical and digital and did a pie chart to represent that and then programs in October and the attendance, new library cards. Museum passes are, that one hundred and eleven is included in the forty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-two because it is materials. But museum passes are really a cool thing and so, um, I think trustees in the past and friends and foundations who pay for it, I think, you know, it's, we want to just call it out.
I don't know if it's used enough, cause I mean, I've used personally, but like the, I mean, I also wanna, especially about the public, have like the library of things on here as well, like how many, how many dozer checkout, because it's also advertising that.
Right.
Hey, we have this library, especially it's gonna go out into general circulation.
Is that included in the physical materials, library thing?
It is. But that's a good idea. You know, and this is something that we could adapt. Oh, what?
I borrowed the weed poller. Yeah, it was really good. A bunch of giant weeds to pull.
But if we had new collections we wanted to highlight, you know, perhaps we could give them a six-month appearance on the monthly report or something, not to get out of.
Yeah.
Crazy, but. Um, that's a good idea.
Why you don't wanna flood it with too much information?
Right.
Tended to.
I do have a good question about the graphic at the bottom, I know this is just a first pass, but like, I don't understand why like there's one person highlighted out of the chat, Megan had the same thought.
I think that's, that's the way it looked was.
Right, it's just, yeah, it's just quick art, but I'm like, that would like, it's like.
Right, what's that guy do?
Let us, you know, let us know if we see this person.
So, just in terms of the layout, though, if, um, this layout, obviously this is pretty dull as you're saying, but it does allow you to compare one year to the next or one month to the next. Whereas something more gra- a graphically out, although more attractive doesn't.
Well, I think you said, like, we don't have the daily. But like, you could, like, you could theoretically say.
We continue to get this.
Yeah, we.
We would continue to get this quarterly.
Oh, okay.
And just like, for example, like this forty-seven thousand number on here, let's say the last October was forty-five thousand, making that number, doesn't really matter. You can, you can put a little parentheses, five percent more than last year or something like that.
Right, we would have to be working for a year from now when we're out showing the trend.
Yeah.
Because that is important, I think, to, to include, you know, the October to October, not so much October to September.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, but once we have reliable apples to apples data on a monthly basis, then that would be included. Going forward, right.
It'd be even interesting to get a, a graph, like a stock market line of that, you know, showing trends on these various categories.
The comparison will get complicated because I don't know what the impact of the teen room being out of commission, whether that'll affect the number of, you know, the amount of materials or.
We can have an asterisk. Yeah. We, the public computer uses, we wanted to keep because that is a really vital service we're providing to people who are experiencing the digital divide, you know, and reliance.
Yeah.
And then the use of our spaces, the three study rooms upstairs and then this room, um, are really a great service to the community. Yeah. Um, and then of course, um, how many people are coming into this building, uh, so that's the in-person visits, um, but we also have our website visits and then um, in the reference departments, um, we track questions that are asked, so in October, almost twenty-four hundred, uh, were asked of Kay Allen and her colleagues.
I mean, this might be a silly question, is that all questions, like if someone asks, where's bathroom?
It's a, it's a directional question, so we, yes.
So that's fine, I just wanted to know like, how detailed like the statistic is.
So, there's something like six different categories that we can click on. So you get generic, we have a box where we can actually put down the question.
Really?
Or whatever it was, if it was something interesting. And we have a whole bunch of, I guess, little leaves that we can check and yes, bathroom gets.
This is everyone at the circulation desk, also everyone?
They don't do that here. We do it, we do it upstairs for reference, it means that we're no longer having the little paper slash marks like we used to. We now know what kind of questions are coming in, so that we have material ready to deal with those. So it's very helpful.
Was that in place when Eric Art was chair? Am I kinda, was that around that time you were?
I think it was coming.
The software, yeah.
Software was just coming into use, maybe used it maybe about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It'll be a little bit over a year for the study rooms, before that it was a Google chart.
Oh, you mean for the study rooms?
Keeping.
Yeah, July one of last year.
Questions, yeah. It's, uh, yeah, it's part of that. Um, it's one of the modules we have, that, but it's a different software package with the questions.
I mean, I'll say, you know, having looked at, at these, both the monthly and the quarterly, the monthly is certainly easy to digest and I suppose there's always flexibility if there's certain statistics that we have an eye on in the future, that are easy to put in here, we can always modify it. Um, but you know, this seems like it really reflects how a lot of companies reflect their financial statements, a lot of times you'll get a snapshot on a monthly basis, condensed financial statements on a quarterly basis and full financial statements on an annual basis, this is kind of a analog, analog to that. But Rob, from your perspective, does, does this also kind of streamline the process of creating the statistics?
We still track everything that's not here that used to be, so it's just creating a, a different report for you, so we're not doing less work, we're still have all that data, but don't wanna overwhelm possibly with minutia that you don't need on a monthly basis, but you know, as you can see on the, the quarterly draft, um, that we provided, there's, it looks more like what you saw on a monthly basis, there's some stuff that we did, uh, you know, chop. But now, this is something that we think, as you've mentioned, um, is really important to give a, a quarterly sense of the activity at the library, um, with more stats.
Can I ask a question about this data? So two, actually two questions about it, so number one, if it's quarterly, why are we getting monthly? Um, and number two is, the numbers don't seem to add up so well, if you're confused by them. Like I was just looking, for example, the very first line total circulation.
Yeah, the three oh six.
Yeah, three oh six, but those three lines only add up to a hundred and fifty every day.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I'll have to double check, I think that was doubled.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
All the other ones make sense, but I guess my question is.
I mean, we can do.
Do we really need monthly data?
We may, um, this may be interesting to change, as you suggest, as we get um, like Q one from FY twenty-six to compare to twenty-seven, and so push away this, but um, you know, this was sort of was our behind the scenes work of how do we got to the quarterly numbers and just thought, um, it might be useful.
Yeah.
But it could, it could change as we move forward and have quarters to compare against each other. But it could, it could change as we move forward and have quarters to compare against each other.
I think the nice thing about this is that it is gonna help to kind of smooth out. Some of the, the crazy ups and downs that you see when you really dissect it. Like when we had the monthly reports that went into great detail, you might have one category that just happens to be at three hundred percent for that one month. But by getting the more detailed information on a yearly basis, it kind of smoothes that out. And presents data that, to my mind, is, is more, more relevant, just to see what the year, the year trend is. And we still get monthly and quarterly data of, you know, sort of the more macro numbers, but.
One, one thing I, I think is interesting on this is the children's room visits for July and August, you know. It's super busy because of summer reading and all the programming and stuff, so you can see that reflected here where in September it drops down to ninety five hundred. So twelve thousand two hundred, when we have in July twenty two thousand people coming in. More than fifty percent of the people coming in are going into children's. Yeah, so we'll have that number, that information too. Thirty two thousand one hundred fourteen.
Why would anyone with you not have a library?
Right.
That's a good motto for the library.
But it's something we'll be working on with our community outreach. Yeah, so. You know, as we move forward a year from now and we'll have those percentage increases and decreases that can help. Add some quick information to the data, the raw numbers. For the monthly and the quarterly, these are just our first takes, so. You know, if you wanna think about, I took notes on library things, the strange graphic. You know, we can address those things. This, this is for, for you, but also like something that we want to be able to. Use that's.
Yeah, because what is that? I mean, that's a, that clean, this is, it's pretty clean, like, just even with the weird graphics and stuff like that. Like it is very useful just to go out to the public.
And I can see, you know, a town meeting, if we're coming to town meeting, with some puzzle, to have a nice graphic like this, where we say, you know, by the way, you need them. You know, the library is heavily used, here's our.
Right. We could adapt this to be, you know.
I like the visuals because it's easier for people to kind of look at something very quickly, digest it and not try to. Do it like a, just like one of those charts.
All right, well, thank you, Rob, and to the staff for creating, and Diana. I'm sure there's a lot of work to, to get these, but they're thoughtful and I'm sure that we'll. Will collectively hone them as the quarters and months go on, but.
Yeah, and we are a good place where we can trust our data, so I just apologize for, for the past few months.
It sounds like we've got it in order and we'll have some good, good numbers and also just some great numbers for advocacy. In, in the coming years, so that's, that's great. Any further discussion? Now, okay, in that case, we can move on to old business. And going back to the team room policy, where we had left it off after the October meeting. Was that, I believe Aaron is gonna reach out to our peer communities and we now see an updated version of that comparison chart. So I'll turn it over to Rob and Michael for that.
So. What I include in the package is all the great work that Rob did prior, which is the columns that are not. Bright, bright yellow, so he asked Erin to reach out to these team librarians in these libraries with. Two questions, you know, does the team room have doors and door locks, are there dedicated staff for that, those spaces? And then for the ones where. Under tutoring, where it said, I forget if your term was like not indicated or something.
Right, because the, the policy was silent or.
Right, yeah, so she got these answers for those where there wasn't an answer. So we just added those to, to the work that Rob did. Just to help inform the discussion.
I think this will really help to guide it and thanks to Erin for taking all the time to call all of these libraries, that's, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, you should see all the, the long responses, like, they're just a really close cohort. And help each other and understand the issues and.
I'm curious about that, because these are the very short answers, but with the long responses, was there anything really interesting in terms of suggesting one way or another about any of this?
I mean, this.
Somebody has strong feelings in particular about tutoring or, or anything like that.
Some, some did, but, you know, tutoring. But some of the spaces aren't rooms, they're like areas, so. They're just different to compare to what we're gonna have and I think there's not. As much dedicated staff in the, in the responses. It seemed like they wish there was more dedicated staff for these spaces, whether they were a room or not. That this is what they could carve out with the existing staff. So like if we can get our DSR four for the new part-time team librarian, we would be a little golden. To have that person also dedicated to that space for every evening and every Saturday. But there seemed to be, you know, in, reading through those answers about the dedicated staff, sort of like. You know, well, you know, we have sightlines and we're able to be there at these hours, but if I'm on vacation, you know. May not be somebody there, you, you know.
Can I put a finer point on Jay's question, which is, did anybody say they wish they had doors that locked?
I have to go back there, I don't remember anybody saying, I wish we had doors that locked. There's some, a couple libraries where there's behavior issues. That had more to do with dedicated staff and sightlines and stuff. But I can go back and check, but it doesn't.
Right, but that's my, like, the reason why I want to put that by, point on that, it's like, you know, because that's, that's what started us on this research project. Was to understand, okay, we're going to have doors that can possibly be locked. Do we have a policy that locks them at certain hours? And this data suggests no one else locks their doors.
There was one of the respondents, respondents that has doors. They're propped open because they're connected to like the children's space. And so there's not dedicated staff, so the doors are propped open, so it's sort of how they've come to. Work the space with staff limitations, so sometimes it's tied to staff allocation. And it's a little bit different if. Yeah, those spaces are tied closely to children's spaces. I can ask Aaron to look at those children's from policies because those may be. May have more influence over those spaces if they're not formal rooms, you know. I think there was a, they have shelving that separated one, a space from the children's space.
And you know, for the, for the DSR four, for the, you know, part-time team librarian, this outreach actually could be. Sort of helpful to advocate, advocate for that, given that we have heard from your libraries to have similar team rooms that. You know, it, it is significantly better when you can have somebody there. You can have somebody dedicated during the busier hours, but obviously that's a discussion to be had, but this is a helpful data point for that.
I was just gonna say, what also kind of plays into this too, we could probably ask questions to the end of time, it's like, how close are you to a school? You know. We're pretty close to a. A teen school.
Yeah. So I was just looking at, if you look at the dedicated staff column and the, who gets to use it? So is there correlation between, yes, we have dedicated staff and some of them allow all patrons in at all times? But it doesn't seem to have a lot to do with whether they have a dedicated staff or not. So two of them that allow all patrons at all times do not have any dedicated staff. One does, so. Maybe that was dependent on whether they had staff, but it doesn't seem to be.
It's a low number two, it's a low N for that, it's all, you know, I think there are three that. Allow all patrons to use during school, during school hours. So it's tough to, with, with that sample size, it's tough to. But it's not all one or the other, dear point.
Can I ask, is the library allowed to have any kind of electronic monitoring inside that room? If that would help alleviate some of it by having just a monitor and a monitoring kind of. Like an internal camera. I don't know if that is something that is feasible or allowed.
We have.
Yeah, there'll be security cameras in the space, when we upgrade them, they'll be brought onboard. And part of the town system, we don't actively watch them, they're sort of post-event issues, so we wouldn't. Watch.
Is that because of their kids in there or is it just?
It's very difficult to keep track with those cameras and where the angles are.
Right.
And you're trying to do other work.
I was just thinking of it as a way to. Kind of augment if you didn't have a physical person in there, then the possibility of at least. Some form of monitoring, just so in case somebody was. Would they say being destructive, that had destructive issues, so.
Yes, so. That's why the sidelines are so important for us and phase four brings the reference desk to the, where the public computers are, which is giving better sightlines. So, you know, DSR four or not, we'll be working with the reference staff to provide. Staff in that space, whether it's dedicated or routine walkthroughs, whether or not. Erin or Matthew were working. But it's an important question, we do have security cameras in the library now, our cap improved plan for. This, I think FY twenty seven includes money to upgrade it to the town system, which at that point, that they installed in that space.
It's a long time coming.
You just have to hold out.
You know, thinking about the timeline for developing this, I also just going over the minutes, I think what we discussed was. You know, initially, there might be some internal procedures, but wait to actually have the room operate for a while to develop. A more formal policy, but it sounded like maybe December, thereabouts, we might review the, the draft. Is, is that still kind of the, the plan?
Yes, yeah, perfect, yeah, so an early draft of room rules. Or the team.
Proceed, that would be the procedures or the policy?
That's not the policy, the policy is what you would talk about, this is internal procedures for staff and. Also just, not just internal procedures, but like expectations of behavior that we would convey. To our team patrons who come into the space.
Perfect, and that gives us, you know, a few months of, of lead time to consider those, for the staff to put them in place, so they're ready on day one. And then, you know, some of the more major ones could be a framework for a policy once that's in place.
Kind of like a dry run.
Yep. And I'm sure there will be unanticipated issues and, and some things that we anticipated, but turned out not to be issues, so.
I'm just glad that we keep this, this particular item open in our, in our agenda. Just so that we can. Upgrade and discuss this, and I think once we, we solidify it, I think it'll be something. Where we'll be happy that we kept it going versus kind of push it off to the side and then, just so it stays fresh in our, in our. It's not necessarily something in the real view, it's something as a destination just to. Make this a good policy or assisting existing policy and expanding it just a little bit.
Further discussion on the team room policy? All right, well, thanks, Rob, and thanks to Aaron for sending that updated spreadsheet. Moving to the next item, we've got the art and exhibits committee report.
So, okay, Rob, I and our two additional committee members met on November fourth. And we have now lined up people for, we have the cases for next three months before the team. So we have, okay, so let's see, so December, we're gonna have Gail Hanson, who does handmade papers and book covers. This is her work, these are in the case, you know, small things for the cases, so all beautifully marbled handmade papers, which are worth looking at.
Handbooks.
And books, okay. Okay, papers and books, right, book covers, that sort of thing. Second for January, we have Barbara Martyr, who has confirmed her. Suddenly blanking on, she does jewelry, so this will be, we haven't done jewelry in a long time, so she does handmade jewels, do you have any?
I don't have that, but I'll have it for next month.
Yeah, so, okay, so we have handmade jewelry by Barbara Martyr. And February, we have, I haven't firmed her up yet, she is definitely interested, Dina Green-Craznow, who does. She runs a whole mosaic studio, she teaches classes at Course Mills, she's a real expert. Mosaic artist that has done big murals, she has a small pieces that she's going to be displaying, I think.
We've had several pieces in open studios over the years from her.
Yeah, so I think she's doing February, I have to kind of nail it down. And then, so right now for the new gallery wall. That would be March is the first month that we've, we, the committee agreed would probably be, the wall will be available again and we have talked with. Susan Woodworth, who is a Wellesley watercolorist, very accomplished. And does mostly nature, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just big colorful, beautifully rendered work.
Is that, you said the team normally expect will open when?
Construction will be done by the end of February, according to the timeline, and then in March, we'll move in furniture and the shelving and the collections, so hopefully by the. End of March, the team room will be open, but by the beginning of March, the. Wooden wall will be gone, so there'll be access on both sides of the stairwell to get around. So we won't have the concern that we have now of everybody just using that one, passing each other too often.
Which is good, because I am delaying this year's art balloon by week. Because the construction, it's now scheduled for the fourteenth and the fifteenth of March. So it'd be nice having art up on the wall.
The gallery is back in action and art balloon will be. Okay, so I'm gonna ask for, I have a, a motion to, a motion to approve December, Gail Hanson in the cases. Martyr in the cases, February, Dina John-Craznow in the cases, and March, Susan Woodworth. Watercolors on the gallery wall. I guess I can make the motion to that, any second?
Second, second.
Thank you for the discussion. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Great, that's approved unanimously and thanks very much, Ken.
Thank you.
And uh MacGyver series, busy month.
Been a very busy month. I wanna just hand this out because I'm going to. Add to it. I hope there's a very much of a hope where um I had met this. Doctor who comes to our library all the way from Boston. And I met this person and I didn't know when I when I had. The uh first three people for the MacGyver series, what's really good about uh Dr. Judith Steen. She falls in line with a lot of the things that we're currently doing with our um memory cafe. Because if you can, I just put this little thumb note. Thumbprint for her, the work that she's doing. And her husband and her both at Children's, Boston Children's Hospital have their own lavatory. They have a laboratory named after them, and she's willing to come to talk here. My MacGyver series stuff has been completed, but I somehow, after meeting this person, I always wanted to have. Maybe just one more person coming, so I was actually going to. Ask the board if they could extend any kind of funding to bring this person here, and I know that would have to go through Rob. And um I think what what was really nice about the MacGyver series with the other speakers. Was that uh when Alyssa Kayzen came and Kay was here, it was, Earhart was here. It was really, really great to see board members there, but it was even better to see them get involved. And I don't know how Kay felt about having Reiki done.
I got on the table.
She did. She was on the table, on the clock, so Alyssa Kayzen came and did her. She had a talk here with two Reiki practitioners. As she was talking, people were receiving Reikis, and uh for first timers, even uh Jeff Arnold. He popped up like a piece of toast and ran over to get another another round of it, which was great. Then we had the Reynolds Brothers who came in and they made a outstanding announcement. Earhart was there again, and I appreciate that, and at that point in time, they made a statement that, and I kept it to myself. Jay was there. I. They had a, uh, they're doing a story about Pope Francis. They had met with him, and they're going. To do this book uh on his behalf, and they had met with him, but unfortunately he had passed away, but the Vatican. They announced that here at our MacGyver series. So I said, I would not say anything. I'd let you guys do that, so you guys were some of the first people to hear that, so I was really happy about that. And then this just past Sunday, Jimmy Myers came in, and he gave the scoop, he gave his story, and he even told us about. What was going to happen with this new gambling thing. Kay can attest to it, and it is happening as he was saying it. And I I just think um. For all of us who will do this particular thing, it's a great opportunity to have certain kind of an eclectic or just. Uh, something more geared towards the library, but something, my 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 desire for the uh. The Reynolds Brothers was more than obvious because they write children's books. And they are willing, when we get to our second phase, to come and then um talk about it. Uh, and promote it that, uh, whatever that is, that could be at a night where the importance of having. Children being able to read books that reflect their thoughts, desires, fantasies, um, things that help them become whole. And these two people that I've known over twenty-three years came to do that, but they said. That they would love to come back and support our desires for our children's stuff, so. They know who you are, so it's good, and Rob was there too, I'm sorry. So it was uh, it it was just a. A great opportunity for the community to come and come together and be part of this. Now, with all that being said, after meeting Judith, and I seen her here in our library for over a year. And I did not know who she was, but then when she told me, I said, you gotta come downstairs to hear Jimmy Myers, and then I had that epiphany, I said. If I can find um the whatever stipend to bring you here. And tonight, while I'm sitting here, she wrote back. She said, I would love to come to talk to the Needham folks. And this is somebody who is dealing with uh professional soccer players, professional football players. She's worked, uh, she's also at Harvard, so she's worked with Michael J. Fox. And people with frontal lobe damage, and this is something where a lot of kids from our community that are involved in sports. As well as people going through and um families dealing with the onset of dementia and those issues. To have somebody of that stature come here would be paramount to the things we are doing. And it uh augments that, but it also adds that professional um spin. But it's somebody who's very approachable, uh, and in my time, this person is so humble. I had no idea who I was talking to. I just thought that was a remarkable person, and then to find out. That her and her husband have a whole uh area of a hospital dedicated, a laboratory for them. I just could not let or uh allow that opportunity not to be here for us. But to also champion that cause, so that's something I'm presenting uh to the table. But I actually sent her the days that Jay gave, and then I said, please let me know. Um, if these days match up for you, and I will do my best to champion this cause to have you to come. This might be a person that might take more than this room to be in, so logistically. All the resources we have to uh have people sign up early would tell us what that would be, because I think. The maximum to this room is about a hundred, but if we got seven hundred people, we'd have to think of something, or potentially.
Yeah, so this is a great topic, Michael. I was just, you know, as a medical writer, um, I did some work on brain. Uh, injury and it's interesting, um, Josh would know better than I, but um as a physician, but um. That it used to be for a long time, I thought that the brain could not regrow new neurons and brain cells. But that's been turned on its head in recent years, and so uh that seems to be her area of interest. Um, it's a whole ability to the brain to kind of heal and grow, um, new gen- new connections of neurons, so.
And I and I think what's really kind of cool is that um hearing that kind of information is paramount for people. Who are completely like, as a former coach, to have an athlete be concussed to the point. Where they're like paralyzed in part of their body, and or it what it does is. Allow some form of hope for people who are going um through this whole process, but also to the people that are. Are dealing with a parent, a friend, a father, a brother, a sister with dementia issues and. Somebody giving them some hope and a pathway to some form of healing or potential normalcy. Where there's, um, what is the word I'm looking for? Kind of like the outcomes are fair and reasonable, that kind of thing, and. Uh, giving, you know, and 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 I just, I just think that what she said about this library. Is why I asked. She said, I I live in Boston and I will not go. To the Boston Public Libraries, because I don't, number one, I don't feel safe. Um, I have a place and and this place is beautiful. It's clean and the environment is is just the kind of environment I want to be in. And when you're dealing with somebody, and and Josh can probably go to this, when you're dealing with some very difficult subject matter. Um, dealing with families that are going through difficult things, for somebody to come in and say, this is the place where I come from, Boston. I've lived there, but I come here to decompress. She comes to our library. So I just said, I've gotta ask people about this, because this is just, that's. What we're asking and wanting from our libraries to bring people and bring talented people to our table. But all of so at the same time, making sure that um, you know. We're promoting our library in a good way, and then to have a person of this ilk want to come here. I'm like, I'm good. So if we can, if that's a possibility, please let me know as soon as possible, because I know this person. Travels, um, and if we can get this person sometime, not this year, but next year. In the early part, it gives us a number of some time to really kind of promote this and um.
Is there funding for another talk?
I only have, I think, well, if he's shaking his head, yes.
Yes.
I like the way, what did you say, Rob? Yes, that that that's beautiful, because I just think um this brings world-class. Elements to our 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 library. And just sheds that light, and it just actually even goes into some of the things, the foundation, like we're talking about. Large institutions having an opportunity and people coming from these places to really kind of. Just like, I love this library. I love what we we do, I love what we stand for, and I love what it does for this community. And anything and anybody we can bring that illuminates. The wonderful work that goes on here, I'm a thousand percent in, and um, let's see if we can do that. Tell me what it is that I need to do. If I have to crawl a little bit, I'll do it, but this person, I really think will um. Kind of do kind of like what uh what Jay had had accomplished uh with Doris Kearns. That kind of notoriety and bringing that kind of uh quality. With everybody that we invite into here. It's not that somebody's better or larger or smaller, but. This consistency of our messaging, uh, we really are a world-class library. We want to be the best in our community and expand that to Metro West and the Minuteman. Uh, the whole Minuteman network, so we want to be that library that everybody says, we want to do it like Needham does. That's what I'm looking for. Yes, but other than that, I can take a deep breath, and I'd like to thank all of the trustees that came. And engaged uh with all the speakers. I also really want to tell everyone. How important it is to have a Gayle on did it on your team, because there were so many things that she did. To kick my my tail, to make me go faster and farther, but it was one of those things to, I think publicly. To acknowledge her um is very important, and just thinking about. Wow, how difficult this is, but look at where we are. We're um hopefully. Like, what's that, Aerosmith back in the saddle again with our MacGyver series, and let's build from that and. Make that something just like the naming rights, where people are just, when they hear MacGyver series, they automatically want to come. That's what, that's what we really want to have, and I think we're 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 moving towards that. And I think with that, it will make it a lot easier for a lot of the other people getting ready to do this. So when you become vice chair, I'm gonna put together a booklet. So that you'll understand what it is that you have to do, because it isn't easy.
Thank you for embracing that with such enthusiasm, Michael.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was scared to death, because all the people before me, it was like I didn't want to let anybody down. That's the, that's the thing of our team that we want to do, and it's like a continuation, the next person up. Will do the same thing and even better, so all we can go is up now.
Thank you, and it sounds like the funding should be, should be also, that that won't be an issue, and certainly. Uh, seems like the, you know, the coast is clear.
How much do we allocate for a speaker?
Six hundred. Perfect. Well, thank you, Michael. And and thanks to Gail on as well.
If I get the okay, I'm on it.
I don't think we need a formal vote. I think it is, as as vice chair, um, you know.
The power.
Yeah.
Really? I am the king of the forest. I hope people out there didn't see this, they keep your danger up.
It'll be on YouTube.
Please not that.
Yeah, well, it might be infringing me, you never know.
That's true.
Um, so next up, uh, we have Friends of the Library.
Well, the big news about the friends is we had a meeting last night that Rob attended, and Rob. Had a budget request for the friends that was substantial with a long list that he went line by line. To explain to the friends, you know, what they're looking for and and why they need this to supplement all the other things, and it ended up being. You know, more than seventy thousand dollars worth of important things, some of which. Uh, the the list includes, you know, uh, eighteen thousand dollars towards children's programming. Uh, fourteen thousand dollars towards the the collections, the various collections, you know. Really, you know, uh, museum passes, uh, book carts. Uh, you know, this, a substantial, the support for the dementia program initiative and. Uh, arts and crafts program, so, you know, uh, and, you know, I I know that the friends were impressed by how thoughtful Rob was when he was. Describing what what they're looking for and and how they need it and why it's important. Uh, and the friends are, you know, extraordinarily generous and. You didn't have, they didn't have to have their arms twisted. After they listened to Rob, they voted unanimously to to support. I think it's. It's it's a total of around seventy-two thousand dollars, of which some money is sort of already on hand. Uh, maybe nine thousand dollars left over from last year, but uh another more than sixty thousand dollars, so. Uh, you know, really, you know, great, great thanks to the friends and their generosity and. Uh, and all the more reason for, just like we support the library foundation, for people to support the friends. You know, uh, I don't see much about here that 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 allows them to get. Some sort of credit for all that they're doing, you know, it's not like a program that they're sponsoring or anything, but certainly it would be appropriate to. You know, to somehow share the information about how the friends are supporting the the library in some way.
With our marketing, with the foundation and the friends, we always um. Give credit to who's sponsoring the event, uh, for materials we purchase, we um.
Have those stickers, okay, so that's great.
Website, um, the museum passes, we um do the similar, so where we can, we certainly always um. Let people know.
It didn't come up in the meeting, and the meeting was simply, yes, generosity, but, you know, so I I I think, uh. You know, they work hard to do all the the book sales and and all the other stuff, and I have a. My sense is that last night was sort of meeting where they they feel good about all they do. Because they're able to make such a substantial contribution to the library.
Well, thanks, Chief, for the update, and thanks to the friends for funding all of those really important things. Um, that brings us to trustee comments. Do we have any?
So just for next month, we say we have, um.
Katie will be here next month. Um, as well as the assistant town manager. Deputy town manager Liz LaRossi will also be joining.
She's new in in the town government.
Yes, and she is.
She was a reference librarian upstairs.
So we're meeting on a regular date?
December ninth will be the meeting, second Tuesday. It's not very long, not very far away, so it seemed like nothing.
Yes, that would be great.
Right, well, um, any any further trustee comments? Here are none. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Any sentence? All in favor?